I ask.
You okay?
Yeah.
All right. Try again. I want to call this, uh, meeting to order. Uh, Historic Preservation Commission meeting, regular meeting for March 11th, 2015. We begin with roll call.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Christmas.
Here.
Chairman Palacios.
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Here.
And Commissioner Choma.
Here.
Um, everybody's here, we have a quorum.
Okay. We're all ready for the pleadent allegiance, please. Move your caps if you need things. Ready, again.
The pleadent allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just as one.
So, um... The commissioners, uh, reviewed the agenda. I entertain a motion for, to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, um, then we have approval of the minutes from January 14th, 2015. First I entertain...
I have one, uh, correction under Citizens Forum, six, um... Third paragraph, second line, Taos Arts Council and the Arts and Artifacts Committee of Taos County.
Uh, okay. Excuse me, what is it you wanted to do there?
Citizens Forum, third paragraph, second line, after Taos Arts Council and the Arts and Artifacts Committee of Taos County, scheduled for, so on and so forth.
You're adding, you're adding something to it?
I'm correcting that line there. To identify the committee properly.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble finding... So what's missing here?
Arts and Artifact Committee, Taos County.
Oh, and artifact is missing.
And Taos County.
And Taos County. Any other, uh, comments or additions or deletions? I entertain a motion to approve, then, the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. Minutes been approved. Uh, we'll go now to item six, Citizens Forum. Citizens wishing to speak shall limit their comments to five minutes or less at the chairman's discretion. No action may be taken, though. This is stuff that's not on the agenda, anybody wishes to speak up from the public. No one, okay. Item seven, public hearings, will begin with, uh, case number HPC 2015-4, uh, request for certificate of appropriateness. If, um, staff would care to comment?
Okay, um, it's the property owner, Mary Ann Romo, with Agent Paul Espinosa of Los Alamitos Two Incorporated, are requesting a certificate of appropriateness to build two decks with portals on the residential property located at 211 Ryback Road. The subject property is .172 acres and is located in an R14 multifamily residential zone within the historic overlay zone within the town limits of the Town of Taos. And, um, Paul Espinosa is here, um, and he will explain exactly what they're planning on doing.
Okay. Mr. Sturz, do you got it?
How are you guys all doing today?
We're good.
Very good.
Sorry, man?
So, um, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
And please state with me?
Uh, Paul Espinosa. I'm a contractor with Los Alamitos Two Incorporated. Right, we're representing Mrs. Romo. She would like to, uh, she has noticed other projects going on around her and she just feels like she would like to make her house look nicer. Right now it's, you know, very squarey, um, so she would just like to add a portal to the front and a small one to the side, which I believe you guys have seen that. I'm sorry. Um, we plan on constructing, uh, a portal with a post and beam, eight by eights, uh, with corbels, um, a parapet, and a few canales. And then we want to restucco the whole house so that it all looks nice.
So, I only see one drawing and that's for the small portal?
Um, there should be a couple drawings there.
Hmm.
There's one on the back. The west side is the larger portal and the south side is the smaller.
Yes.
And the one is a two level? The, the large one is a two level portal?
Um, yeah, the larger one, uh, the parapet will all be one, one height, but, uh, the portal to the left, she would like to step down one step just to give it a second level there.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners?
Um, I'm interested to know if you had any conversations with your neighbor immediately to the, uh, south, the Rebek Mendelman home?
I have, and she said she was not, uh, she was sent to the appropriate information, and she says she just got through, if she'd like to. And of course, her house is sold to sale, but more we improve our property, the more likely she is favored to sell.
Thank you, I'm glad you had the conversation with the neighbor.
Excuse me, Ms. Romo, you want to come up here so we can, uh... We can hear your, uh, comments?
When I spoke to her about our intentions for the, um, for the portals and courts kept her, uh, she says she was in agreement, and I also added, maybe this is my, uh, comment, uh, she's selling her house, it has been on the market for a couple of years, and of course, I think, you know, just that improving my property will help her sell hers.
Thank you.
And, uh, you submitted a color, uh, chart. You underlined a few different colors.
She, she just, uh, gave me a couple here, I'm going to give these to you, I'll just say a color.
Well, we have, uh, we have the sheet here, what, what is it you want to do with these three colors?
Um, she wasn't sure of the color yet.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we thought we ought to put something, so you guys just know we're not going to make it red or a crazy color. I wasn't sure, if you guys wanted, uh, if we have to choose one right now, then we will do that.
Oh, I think, I think we could probably word it, they're, they're pretty similar in, uh, tone, um, in my opinion. We could probably word it that, uh, you would use the palette of one of the three, and maybe a combination of the, of these, or, uh, or is that, or you make everything one color?
Uh, it'll be one color, it'll be one color, uh, probably the lighter of them. She wants to, uh...
Would that be the fawn?
Keep it a little bit lighter. Um, just now that we were looking through her colors, she said that, uh, she was actually even looking at ash.
Oh, so it's...
And ash isn't one of them, but...
A fourth color, okay. Which number was ash? Oh, it's going towards a white-ish, very...
She, she wants to have a lighter color there.
Okay. It's got a little bit of a tan tone to it. So, is that the color you would, your, your first choice then, at this point? I mean, because it'd probably be good to approve.
Uh, probably the, the ash, and the other color was, uh...
Soapstone, ash and soapstone are kind of...
I'm not sure that we submitted soapstone. But soapstone is just, um, I don't know, is soapstone a base?
They're very close, they're very similar.
So you have those two there then, because the, the soapstone's not on, on this chart?
Soapstone is actually in the second row, the third one.
Second row, oh. Yeah, they look different here, the xerox gives them a pink hue or the copy.
That we wanted to stay away from, from the pink stuff.
Right, soapstone is pink on mine, huh?
But it's just, um, I don't remember, but fawn looks like it's a little more on beige.
It's a light, it's a, it's a...
It's a light beige. These are just off-white.
It, uh, staff, is there any requirement for color in historic overlay zone?
There is, um, I'm not sure what the colors are, but I think they have to stay a lighter color, they can't be any bright fluorescent colors or anything too bright.
Well, they, all these choices seem to fit that, uh, criteria.
I think so. What's, what's the minimum distance from the, I'm going to call it the southwest corner of the addition to the southern, southwesterly property line? So you're, you're bumping out the corner of this residence. How much distance does that leave you between your property line and the nearest corner? Approximately?
What corner is that?
Well, um, if north is up, I'd like to know the distance between that corner and this property line, roughly?
Approximately fifteen feet.
Okay.
Any other comments, any architectural comments?
Would you be able to offer any further information on the, um... The new construction, the portal, the, the columns, et cetera, what type of wood, um, et cetera?
Um, they'll be eight by eight, it'll be a Doug Bird wood. Eight by eight posts, uh, with the, with the design that looks very similar to the drawing. Um, the beams, you know, they'll have corbel and beam over the top.
Overall then, in keeping with the historic...
Yes, sir.
...elements that are in that area?
Okay.
On the one elevation, you show a six by six post, is that, uh...
Yeah, well, um...
Is that going to the porch post? I can't tell.
Um, the design that they chose, uh, that, that they drew out here, we were going with the six by six, but the person who would make these for us told us that going eight by eight would give more support, probably end up with a six inch when we're done.
Top and bottom.
With the, with the, with the, with the carving part. So, when it's done, it'll be close to a six inch, but we're going to start with an eight inch so that we make sure we have the, the proper post for this.
Anyone else? And, um, staff recommends approval?
Yes, staff recommends approval on this one.
Okay. Will you now entertain a motion?
Uh, I drove, uh, up to the site today and I did have a look at the building and I could very well see what it is that you have planned here, and thank you for your presentation. And I, um, would like to make the motion that we approve this certificate of appropriateness based on, uh, the applicants conforming to code and all of the requirements in the application that are necessary. We can see compliance with all of it, and so I make the motion to go ahead and approve the certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Uh, I'll second. I too have visited the site and everything looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, would you, roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Christmas?
Yes.
And Chairman Palacios?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Choma?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
I lost my drawing. So much paper. Okay. So we go to item B. Certificate of appropriateness for case number HPC 2015-5. Mr. Glenn Tarleton, um, would you introduce the, the project further?
Okay, so, uh, property owner, Del Norte Property LLC, with Agent Glenn M. Tarleton, are requesting a certificate of appropriateness to demolish the commercial building on the property located at 402 Asilo de Pueblo Norte. The subject property is 1.5 acres and is located in an R14 multifamily residential zone within the historic overlay zone within the town limits of the Town of Taos. So, uh, Mr. Tarleton, if you could come up and present your case?
Just a real quick question, could we, are we going to do these separately or together? They're on this?
I believe that we have to do them separately, um, but I think as far as the, I mean, the vote would have to be separate, but as far as...
We have, excuse me, we have separate case numbers, and so because we have two separate case numbers and applications, just for the clarity's sake, it might be best.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Is it a single property, Mr. Tarleton?
This is a single property. Both homes are on the 1.5 acres, in other words. Would you...
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do, so help me God.
Okay, state your name, please.
My name is Glenn Michael Tarleton. And what we are trying to do here is, um, we have two old dilapidated buildings that were built some time ago. The, the problem with those is that we've been trying to rent them now, well, the, the one of them was the Dragonfly Restaurant where the, the operator moved out on us last spring, early spring, and leaving us owing rent, but, which is beside the point, but, um, in the meantime, we have not be able, been able to rent that property again, have had no, um, people that have expressed an interest in using it either as another restaurant or a, any other kind of building. And, uh, right next to it is the, uh, building that, um, Dr. Kilgore worked out of, and he died, as you know, um, and, um, his daughter moved everything out of that building and we've had it up for rent, and we've had absolutely no, um, interest in it either. Um, we've looked at the, uh, problems with the building, the one, um, that was the restaurant has had extensive remodeling done to it, so it would take a considerable amount of work to bring it up into any kind of rental, uh, condition, and the same with the other. It's 85 years old and it would, uh, take a lot of work to bring it up to any kind of, uh, rental condition. The windows in the west side on the, which is behind the street, on the opposite side is the street, have been broken into already, and so we've seen people that have been in there looking around or sleeping there or doing whatever. Uh, they have already been, every year we have people in the back where the orchard was, uh, that sleep back there, but, uh, now they've moved into the house, I guess. And so, um, uh, each of them have structural problems, no foundation. The one that's, uh, that the doctor was renting has severe structural deficiencies on the west wall, I think you could see that where the, in the picture even that we furnished you, where the center of that wall is caving down about several inches because the doctor had a leak in the root cellar on the west side and three feet of water in the basement there caused the foundation to cave, which caused damage not only to the west wall, but to some interior walls, which are also adobe, all the interior walls are adobe in that house. So, we're thinking that we have some real problems there. I did have a architect look at it yesterday, Doug Patterson, he was supposed to be here today. I wasn't supposed to be making this spiel, it was, uh, Markowitz, Mark, Mark, uh, Mark was supposed to be, uh, Yarovitz was supposed to be doing it, but he had another engagement, so I, I'm the one that's, uh, up here talking to you all.
Okay, so, uh... This is, uh, really a continuance of, of, of a, of a project that came before us where you were going to build apartments in the back, and we asked you to preserve those buildings. And, uh...
We had, at that time, the doctor was alive and, and the lady was renting the dragon, the other building, yes. And we had every intention of, uh, leaving our tenants in those buildings.
Okay, uh, but since they have, well, since they've left, I don't think you've done much work on the buildings in terms of closing them up or, uh, maintaining them or bringing them up to snuff?
No, we have absolutely no funds in order to do that with.
Okay, um, there's a recommendation from staff that I'd like to hear.
Okay, uh, staff recommendation, staff recommends that this certificate, certificate of appropriateness request be denied based upon previous conditions placed on this property by the Historic Preservation Commission or continued pending the completion of review by the State Historic Preservation Office. Any recommendations other than denial should cite the findings and recommendations made by the State Historic Preservation Office.
Okay, so, it appears that this has been presented to the State Historic Preservation Commission, or the Historic Review, uh, Commission, uh...
Yes.
With SHPO, I don't, I don't know.
I understand that, and I have copies of what they sent me...
Okay.
...back in early 2000, I believe. It was a review that they did on both those homes.
I see.
And they said, since they're in the historical dis, district, that I have a, uh, choice, I can either make them part of, uh, I can either have them accepted as a, uh, registered landmark or whatever you want to call it, or not. And I, I declined on both those homes. And I said, I, there may be a point in time I want to be able to remove those homes from the site, and they said, in order to do that, you want to decline, and I declined that offer. And they said, fine.
But right now, it's been submitted to the state.
Well, that was, and I don't know why that would change without me being, um, informed of that.
Well, because you, you're asking to demolish buildings in the historic which, uh, contribute to the fiber of, of the historic district.
So, now you're referring it to the state, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And, uh, because we feel they're, uh, they're actually worth taking care of and bringing up to snuff, and, uh, they're part of the historic, and, uh, and if you don't, uh, get a tenant or whatever, there also are ways of preserving buildings so that people don't wreck them further and that, uh, either the elements or the, um, transients or whoever it may be break it in. I mean, you have to make an attempt to preserve them, uh, in, in my opinion. So, I would like to hear from the rest of the commission, but I, I feel, I would like to hear what the state has to say about your historic buildings in...
Well, are we...
They're historic whether they're labeled historic, uh, or not, I mean, they're old buildings and they're part, uh, they look just like the other buildings down the road.
Right, I understand that, but when I was notified by the Town of Taos that I had the choice of either adding them into the Town of Taos and being labeled as a historical building or not, and I declined, I thought that was the end of it. That's, maybe that's my mistake, but I haven't heard anything into contrary since then.
Uh, go ahead.
Because I have some, a, a single question for staff. In my experience, whatever, uh, contact or correspondence is undertaken with SHPO, the state agency down in Santa Fe, whether that's done by the applicant or whether it's done by the municipality, they're typically very transparent about their response. Every time I've contacted SHPO, they send out a letter to the owner and to the municipality. Is there anything on file from SHPO at Town of Taos regarding this property?
I didn't find anything on that, um, but it does state in the town code, um, that they should, or that the town may notify them, and so that's what we did.
It sounds like from the applicant, a document was issued, some correspondence in writing from SHPO? But we don't have it here, correct?
And I don't have my file with me, but I...
It's okay.
Do you have a copy?
I'd sure like to see that.
I did give you a, did, you, I showed you the copies, did you make...
Was it in the packet?
It had a picture of the, um, front of the houses on them.
Typically, they issue a letter with some findings, I'd sure like to see that, I think it's relevant to the case.
May I take a second?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I, I try not to be confused about, uh, items here, but, Mr. Tarleton, when you talked about a previous application or, or correspondence with, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office, was it about placing the buildings on the, the option you had to place them on a contributing inventory of buildings in the historic district? And they said you could, or you could not, that was your choice, and you decided the choice would be not to put, make them contributing structures?
That is correct, I had the choice to make them a contributing building or not, and I declined.
So what we're, we're referring to, and I think the staff is, is that even a non-contributing property, the, the town has the option of going to the state for a review of that structure by... before the commission makes a decision for demolition or not. I think that's where we are today.
I see, okay.
I'd also like to comment, if I may?
Sure, please.
We have here a very well put together packet here from staff at this meeting. I was here on the commission for all the prior meetings regarding these properties and was part of the commission's decision to impose certain conditions. At that time, there were a few speakers here in the room that suggested that you might have been remiss even at that time in appropriately maintaining these buildings. And as a result, one of the, one of the conditions were for you to go right ahead and catch up on deferred maintenance on both of these buildings, and there was a very clear list, which is in fact printed here and repeated of all the conditions. I'm, would like to now read code sixteen point, sixteen point two-two point seven, preservation requirement. Preservation required. All owners of properties within a historic overlay zone shall be responsible for the preservation and maintenance of all buildings and structures on their property to prevent decay and deterioration. Owners shall repair buildings or structures if they are found to have any one of the following defects, and that goes into a list of six items. Deteriorating or failing foundation, deteriorating flooring, floor structure, failing walls, and so forth. In the prior meetings, this was discussed, and these conditions were put out. And in fact, one might say that you could be potentially, I'm not here to issue legal judgment, in violation of that code by not maintaining these buildings properly, having deferred maintenance to the point where now you are suggesting that you would like to demolish them. Also, as a reminder, I clearly remember, and this is on film as a matter of record, we did ask the question, "Do you plan to demolish these buildings in favor of this project that you wish to do in the acreage behind?" And your answer was very, very clear. No, I do not plan to demolish these buildings. And once you, we received your answer, we included proper preservation and maintenance and catch up to deferred maintenance as conditions that you needed to adhere to. From what I'm hearing now, that hasn't happened in all of these months, and now there's a request to demolish the buildings? Based on that alone, I myself would indicate denial of your request.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, and, and like I said before, at that time, the doctor was alive and operating his office out of the one building. The, the lady was operating her restaurant out of the other building, and we had no intent to, 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 to do anything about that. We were able, we were trying to work with the two parties, in fact, to design a project that would leave those two buildings in place. Let me explain one other thing. As far as the doctor's office, which has the adobe structural problems, that occurred before we owned the property. It was just a year and a half or two years ago that we were able, that we procured that And so, and from what I understand from the previous owner, that the reason for the very low rent that they were charging the doctor was that he maintained his building. It's true that we have not done a lot of work on that building, the doctor's office, because the simple reason that shortly after we acquired the building, the, the doctor passed away. We did do some work on the building, although really, we did, we worked in some of the plumbing and some of the other things for him. The other building, we have pretty much kept up. We have, if you, if anybody would look at the roof, we just put a brand new roof on that building a few years ago. We didn't do any other work because, again, the terms of the lease were that the owner or the operator of the building would maintain the property to, to there, to, to keep it up. And, and she did, so she did a lot of renovations in that building, tearing down walls, putting up this, doing that, painting, closing for two weeks or three weeks out of the year to, to do needed maintenance and upkeep on the building and that sort of thing. But since then, we haven't done any, since she moved out, we haven't done anything on the building, no. We haven't because, other than try to keep it from falling down, because we have absolutely no idea what anybody would want to rent that building for. Excuse me. Consequently, we have had a contractor take a look at the building and say, and confirm my thoughts that any costs to renovate those buildings and bring them up to a rentable condition, we would not be able to charge the rent necessary to make those buildings even pay for themselves. So we're just sort of caught between a rock and a hard spot at this point in time. We may be able to, down the road, continue and do some, a, a brand new construction on some buildings there that would replace the, the two that are there and, and make it fit in with the town and the idea of, of what the town is trying to do along North Pueblo Road there, but those two buildings just don't seem to be in the financial picture for us. I hope that helps explain a little bit.
Well, it doesn't explain to me preserving the buildings or maintaining the buildings. It doesn't, it, it seems, there seems to be a bit of neglect, and I don't mean all of the deferred electrical and so forth necessarily at this time, but even when you have a tenant in a building, it's, it's very unusual that the landlord does not take care of the roof and the infrastructure of, you know, of the building.
Well, like I said, the, the building, the building we owned all along has a new roof and has pretty much all new windows in it. It's the other building that we picked up that hasn't had that work done, and that was beyond the time, that was not during the time we had anything to do with it.
Okay, I'm, I'm lacking all the, all the words for it, but I know that there's a, there's a way that you can make, that you can close up a building and preserve it so that it doesn't further deteriorate.
That's right.
In other words, you can board up windows that don't, well, you can board up a whole lot of it.
Well, that's, that's where we're at. We're, you know, we haven't done that yet because we've been trying to rent it, and in order to show the building, which we've done, we've, you know, we don't want it all boarded up, so.
Well.
Now, I, our, our, I guess what our, our, we're gonna have to board it up to keep people out of it and preserve it.
Mr. Tarleton, it appears that you really want to demolish both these buildings. If that's granted, would you also, how much of the existing landscape elements would remain? There's a really large spruce tree, the furthest north property, there's some, there's an acacia running through both properties, old lilacs, old residential landscape from generations ago. It's kind of cute, you know, it takes a long time for large spruce trees to grow that big. Do you have any intention of removing the landscape elements, or would you just take down the buildings?
At this point in time, we just take down the buildings. If we had a plan to, to, to build something on that property like we had, like Mr. mentioned, we then would maybe have to tear down some of the trees that are there. A lot of them, there, there are no fruit trees in that.
There's an orchard indicated on the plat, does that not exist?
That is an orchard that was in production back in the, in, in the thirties, forties, and fifties. The trees back there are, do not, are too old to bear any fruit.
Well, I guess that, that kind of leads into my next question. It sounds like you really have a vision for your property, but I'm, I'm new to this commission. There, there may have been site plans submitted indicating what development, what your vision is. I'm not, I'm not seeing that. I don't think that's part of tonight's case.
Well, we, we did have.
Although it may.
Yep.
It's hard for me to tell what you want to do to the property besides, we want to tear the buildings down, and I'd sure like to see what your actual vision is, like, for example, let me be real clear. It'd be great, it'd be wonderful if I could see a, a site plan that you could show me, your, your, your team could show this commission a scheme where you keep the buildings, a scheme where you keep one or the other, and a scheme where you demo them all, and then we could really compare what your vision is. That's all I'm asking for, and it's, I think it's pretty, it's, we're not asking you to do that tonight, it's unrelated.
Yeah.
Maybe it happens at a later date.
Well, that's, that's perfectly possible, yes. I, I, and I'm sorry my architect didn't show up tonight. I met him yesterday, and he was supposed to be here, but I don't know what happened. I haven't heard from him.
Well, I, I would like to recommend that we table this until the next meeting because we don't have the information that's being requested from SHPO.
Yes.
And we need to, we need to do some, we need to get our, our ducks in, in line. Basically, I think that you guys are defaulting on, on your request to take care of these Even when they're vacant, they're still a property, and it seems to me, if you take, you don't take care of them, you've already begun the demolition process, and I think that's not, was not the intent of, of the last time you came before us. And so I think, I think we're aggravating, aggravating the problem at this time, and I, I would like to see an effort made to, to take care of your, your properties. To come in and say, well, they're just getting worse, that doesn't cut it for me. We, we needed more, we need more information and.
But just for clarity's sake, my understanding is that the request before this commission today is permission to demolish. Is that correct? Yes?
Yes, I, I filled out the, I went to file for a demolition permit, and then I found I had to file for some other application too, which resulted in this meeting tonight.
Well, this commission, by record, has in fact indicated to you in the past, more than once over a series of meetings, that you may be remiss in maintaining these buildings, and this commission has asked you to do so. And so that's what's on the table before us. This has not been done, and now you wish to demolish these buildings. However, this commission has asked you to take care of them and maintain them. These are two opposite things going on here. From my perspective, I don't need more information to make a decision on my end regarding whether my take personally on whether you should demolish these buildings or not. The request of this commission has been that you catch up with deferred maintenance, which has made these buildings what they are now, and you preserve, maintain, and protect these buildings. This is what this commission has asked you to do. I wish to state that for the record.
We've, we've been trying to rent those buildings now for over, since they've been vacated, and we just don't have the funds available to do any work on them till we get them rented. It's, it's as simple as that.
Would that change your mind about the demolition process if you found a tenant for either one of those properties? You'd keep them?
Yes, it would help, yes. This is my agent, Mark Yarovitz, he'd like to, I'm sorry, he, he's here now, he can speak for me.
I'd just like to clarify a couple things also. The, the Tarleton's only acquired.
Excuse me, would you slide a minute?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to tell the truth, the whole truth.
I do. My name is Mark Yarovitz, I'm the agent for the family here. The Dr. Kilgore property was only acquired by them in the last year or two, okay? It really hasn't been in their family or their purview to take ma, to do any maintenance on that building, and the, and the agreement that was made with Mr., with Dr. Kilgore, I should say, was that he wanted no maintenance, his rent had never changed, he stayed there as long as he lived and was allowed to do so. So there was no, there was no, the other owners of the property were not taking care of it because that was his desire, so there would be no rent change. And he was given the equivalent of a life estate to stay there, even when the property changed hands to them, to stay there and practice until just recently, last year when he passed away. So the care and maintenance of that building is not their responsibility, has not been. As for the Dragonfly Restaurant, there was a major issue. I don't want to bring up the legalities of what occurred under that domain. We took a look at it, I as their agent, to try to rent it out and make it usable again. And as we went through it, none of the economics of remodeling that building, regardless of some of the other components, could be justified with any return on investment in rents. It's a serious hardship, the numbers make no sense, and the fact is, is that if you, if the architect was here, he would sign or give you the affidavit of this building and the cost of remodeling. Now, the third question that I don't know the answer to, that I understand you're waiting on, is whether or not these buildings fall under the domain of whether or not they are part of SHPO's control area or not. I asked that question, I asked the town for a list of their contributing, I'm not sure of the right phrases here.
Yes.
But for those buildings that are illegal to take down without permission, and those that are just there and old, and whether or not they can take them down anyway. I'd like to, I would like some clarification from the town or from your group on what you think is the legality of what this issue is about here. Do they have the right to tear down their own buildings based upon what is in existence in the SHPO books and in your documents? I have asked for copies of that, of what buildings are, and I've never received records of it because I don't know if you, I don't know if they exist, I would like to see them. What are the status of these buildings in, in terms of what you have?
Well, okay.
That's my question.
Well, I will acknowledge your gray area of, of the listing of these buildings under the state. Our task is to preserve the buildings that are in the historic zone, the historic area. You are, you are in that zone, I believe.
Correct.
And Mark, you were also, I believe, part of the other proposal, where we stated that that other project could go through, and it was not the intent of the owner to demolish them.
Correct.
At least for the record at that time, and there was an agreement to take care of those buildings.
Correct.
But, so we're looking at the neglect factor at this point within what we're asking you to do. The reason to go to the state and so forth is to see what kind of tea The reason to go to the state and so forth is to see what kind of teeth or whatever are within it, within all of this, which is what you're looking for, some kind of loophole. But...
Correct.
Our job, uh, is to preserve the character of the historic area, which these buildings are very much a part of. And if they're taken down, that would put a big scar there. So, the reason I was asking to table it was so that this dialogue could go on. But in terms of, uh, Commissioner Choma's, uh, answer to, you're asking to tear it down, and we're, that's all we're asked to vote on, that, I could entertain a motion on that too, because, uh, we've already asked you to keep the buildings, and you agreed to it. And now you're disagreeing.
I, I, I beg your pardon. The question never came up about the doctor's office, whether we wanted to tear it down or not. Our intention was always to save it. The other building, and I stated before, in this me, in these meetings before, that if Karen ever moved out, we would tear that building down.
You stated that?
That should be on the record from the meetings we've had here before, a year ago.
I'm sorry, I, I somehow, could you repeat that, please?
We never said that we would keep Karen. Karen said, what would you do if I, if I just left? And we said, we would probably, we would remove that building. We're talking about 402 Pueblo.
Uh, well, one is Dr., former doctor...
The, the Dragonfly.
Right.
I, I never said I would keep it. I, I, so, I, I don't, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying that I, I believe I can remember stating during those meetings we had, when we were talking about the apartments, that if Karen ever left, we would take that, we would demolish that building. I didn't say the same for the other building, but I did say that for, for the restaurant.
I do not believe that this commission ever heard a statement, correct me if I'm wrong, that you indicated you will demolish any one of those two buildings. As a matter of fact, we were very clear in asking whether these two buildings on Paseo Pueblo Norte, which did front the project that you had in mind at that time, whether you had intentions to demolish them. And that answer was no. So, the other thing is, as far as addressing, uh, I think Mr. Yarvitz, who may have walked in after I read from code, but there is a preservation requirement that all owners of properties within a historic overlay shall be responsible for the preservation and maintain, maintenance of all buildings and structures on their property to prevent decay and deterioration. All right? Owners shall repair buildings or structures if they are found to have any of the following defects, falling walls, et cetera. So this is not criteria based on whether it's a contributory building or not. And to say, when you, this also would indicate a building that you purchase that may have fallen into some disrepair. When you become the owner of that building, the responsibility for maintenance, preserving, protecting, fixing it up, comes to the new owner of that property. And so, I just wanted to make that clear. It is code. We're happy to share it with you. We have it in the packet. And this is why I will repeat this. This is what this commission asked, uh, Mr. Tarleton to do. These were the conditions put out, and the conditions put out had everything to do with protecting these buildings, maintaining them, keeping them, and also protecting the asequia and asequia rights within that area. So, we are now looking at a request for demolition. I know that I personally don't need to table that. Our request has always been to maintain, preserve, and protect these buildings. And to find out months later that very little, or hardly any, of these conditions have been met, so one can imagine only further deterioration occurs, and then a request for demolition, this is not in line with what this commission has asked of, of you.
Thank you. Paul?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, with your, uh, I think you made a motion to table this, um, till the next meeting.
No, I did make a motion.
Mr. Tarleton and Mr. Yarvitz.
I entertained a motion.
Entertained a motion, okay. So what I would, uh, make as a motion is that we defer action on this certificate of appropriateness for demolition of both 402 and 404, until such time as this commission and the staff of the town and the owner and architect of the properties receive the information that we have requested from the state historic preservation office, so that we have more knowledge about, uh, this issue. That's my motion.
Oh, we can't say anything?
Um, if we have a second, we'll discuss it after the second. Do we have a second on that, at this time?
I'd second that motion. Simply stated that, uh, the reason we're postponing this, and I, I'm looking at the dates here, it looks like you've been before this commission quite often over the past two years. So I, I'm concerned that we're postponing again, but, uh, I think there is a, a lack of written data from SHPO. There's been mention of several letters and correspondence, and yet they're not in the packet. Um, I haven't seen any of that. I, I think it would be a shame if, if we voted on this applicant tonight and, and we said, fine, tear it down. SHPO writes us a letter tomorrow saying, hey, those are some of the best buildings in Taos. I don't expect that to happen, but it could. And for that very reason, I, I'm seconding Paul's motion to just simply table it until we hear from SHPO.
So, um, at this time, I entertain some discussion on the, there is a, a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Yarvitz?
If, if we have the option to ask you for either the denial right now or the tabling, is that in our privy to ask for either one? If we prefer one over the other?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it would be my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, staff, that the request to SHPO went for both properties. And until I, as a commissioner, hear back on their report for both properties, I would prefer not dividing it up at this time for action by the committee.
Is that?
Is that the case?
Yes, that's the case. It went up for both properties.
So, uh, Mr. Yarvitz, we're waiting to hear back from the state preservation office on both properties as to the appropriateness to demolish a non-contributing property in a historic overlay zone. And we'd like to hear from professionals who know code and know about preservation. And, uh, I would assume that both the owner, the architect, and the developer would like to know about that also.
Uh, let's see, in, I don't know if you, if the applicant has this in their packet, but in our packet, we received a list. Uh, it doesn't have a title. I'm assuming it's a list of properties within the historic zone. Both your properties are on this list, but, uh, so, uh, I don't know why they're on this list. You can, you can have...
No, they're...
But they're on the list.
The question on the table that you're waiting to answer, I'm sorry.
Let me just, um, Mr. Tarleton, you, you said that one of the properties from nineteen, is roughly eighty-five years old. The other one appears a little older. I would find it hard to believe that a hundred-year-old property in the historic zone wouldn't be contributing. Why wouldn't it be?
Because they asked me if I wanted it to be contributing or not, and I said no.
Oh, oh, I see.
That's one of the properties.
Is that the criteria?
Would you, I thought you didn't own them.
I recommended to the people that owned the other property to decline that, and they did too. Where's our property at?
Uh, you're on, uh...
This is getting, wait, wait a minute. Wait, I want to stop for a second. Wait, Mr. Tarleton, please. Dave?
Sorry. I don't know what this list represents, but...
She does not want listing right there.
I, I see that.
That's where I declined it.
Does that make it now?
Wait a minute, uh, you guys are like carrying on over here. Can you just?
Sorry.
Well, right there...
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry.
Just hold on a second. Uh, Mr. Commissioner?
My, my understanding, um, we, I believe, did I, did we furnish this to you or?
Yes, you did.
Help me with her name. Rachel Prince, I believe was hired by the town of Taos or by the state, I don't know which, to look at all, virtually as many properties as she could in the historic overlay district, and write down a list of properties which she thought should be on, on, in a contributing, I guess, and...
To the fabric.
Fabric of the historic overlay zone. That's what this, and it's noted on there, I guess, when she did this survey, which was, I believe, within the last five years, but I can't really tell you that.
Is that what this list is?
About ten years ago, I think.
Was it ten years ago?
I'm not sure Commissioner...
Well, she's only been in New Mexico for about ten years, though. But that's where this came from. And we, we had requested that, uh, from her, because she came up to a, um, meeting here about a month ago about historic preservation and was one of the presenters. And we, I met her there, and, and she told us about the existence of this list. So that's where that came from.
Well, and, and it does say on there that we do not want that listing on those two properties.
That's very clear.
That, that part is clear. To me, the gray area has to do with you're, you have an old building in the historic zone. And as far as the, the commission is concerned, and as far as your agreement, and the last time you presented this, we asked you to keep those buildings and take care of them. And, um, within, within our powers, we're, we're trying to preserve the zone. And I, and those buildings were inhabited a short time ago. Now, I find it interesting, so I don't know all the connections. One is, you were saying you just recently acquired the, the second, Dr. Kilgore's building, the second one. And then you were giving them advice to, so you, you're familiar with the project, you knew what you bought.
That's correct. My grandparents built that house.
So that was, so who owned the property at the time that this, that this survey was done?
My cousins, first cousins.
Your cousins? And you advised them not, not to, to list them?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, part of, part of the, the state listing and so forth about buildings has to do with tax credits and things like that. Uh, well, excuse me, uh...
Well, they received all the paperwork in their hands, and they asked us what we were going to do. And we said, this is what we're going to do. We're going to decline the listing. And they just said, well, we'll decline it too. I'm not, I'm sure I advised them. They just followed my lead.
Okay. Um, so you've made your case. Uh, we have a motion on the floor. Is anyone else like to speak? Yes? Step up.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I have, I do. I swear.
Please state your name.
Anne McKenzie. Um, and, um, my property is in the adjoining neighborhood to Mr. Tarleton's properties in question. And, um, we li, we have properties in the historic district, and my point is perfectly encapsulated in the paragraph read by Commissioner Choma. Preservation required. All owners of properties within a historic overlay zone shall be responsible for the preservation and maintenance of all buildings and structures on their property to prevent decay and deterioration. The property owner has allowed the buildings to deteriorate, and I wonder what will happen if we refuse them permission to demolish the old buildings? Will they simply allow them to collapse? Is there any way these people can be led to understand that they have special responsibilities when they own in the historic zone? The buildings are precious to Taos. Everybody goes by them. We all know them and love them. And you can't, and it's not like it's just a chicken coop off in the burbs somewhere. And, um, I also have, uh, there is someone else here who has, um, gone over the lease that was offered to Karen at the Dragonfly when she left. And I did not see it, but I was told that one has heard of leases with teeth, but this le, lease had fangs. And I doubt his sincerity in attempting to rent the properties.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Could you help us with the fangs?
I didn't read it, but I understood that, no? And I tried to reach Karen, and I could not. And if, if there is another meeting, I could go, I can hopefully get a copy of that lease that was offered to Karen and bring it to you, if you like. I, I don't know if she still has it, but I understood it was outrageous, impossible.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Just hold on a second. Um, I think, I think your architect is here, and I think he was making motions, so, uh, do you want to take the floor, Mr. Patterson?
I'd be glad to.
Excuse me, sir.
...with the last lease that I offered Karen.
Okay.
That's all I want to say.
All right, thank you. Well, that's, well, that's why it's hard to just make, I feel, make a cold determination until you have all the facts. I also appreciate, uh, if we want to rescind this and just go ahead and, and refuse it. That's what you're asking us, right, Mr. Yarvitz?
I haven't asked for that yet. I'm not asking for anything. I did not, I asked if we had an option, and then I said, just let it go.
Okay. Thank you. Sure.
You have to swear me in.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
State your name, please.
Douglas Patterson. Um, good evening, commissioners. Um, I'm a little bit late to this project, but I did, uh, see it over the course of time as a planning and zoning commissioner. And then I was called to, uh, review these properties with Mr. Tarleton. Um, I walked the properties, uh, and, you know, it's a tough call, because I think there are a couple of buildings that are beyond their useful life. And to basically make them useful again is, uh, exceeding the cost of something that would be built new. So I think it's a, um, it's a tough situation. I think they're, you know, when you look around them in the zone that they're in, uh, they're in a commercial zone. Uh, they have the Cachina Lodge to the north of them, they have the post office to the south of them. Uh, there are two standalone structures, um, that reflect a single-family residential nature to that zone that isn't there anymore. Uh, and, uh, the structures themselves, um, uh, don't have, uh, plumbing, don't have heating, um, don't have adequate services. Uh, their, their structures are beyond their useful life and failing. The client finds themselves in a place where they can't lease the structures as is. They can't, uh, find a tenant that can afford the cost of bringing those structures back to a useful life. Uh, and the owner themselves can't find the resources to bring those structures back to their useful life. I know that Mr. Palacio stated that the, the, uh, the goal of this commission is to preserve the historic nature of the structures. Um, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure I've seen that written somewhere, so I'm not sure of where that comes from.
Uh, look at the title of our commission.
That can be the title, but there's nothing that states that that's your, that that's your role.
Um, I don't know. I, we'd have to, we'd have to, we'd have to...
I disagree with that.
What?
Well, we're, we're welcome to disagree. There's two different viewpoints. You, I, I don't think it's up to your, up to your, uh, uh, role as a commissioner to state that role. I think that would be part of your... I think that would be part of your, that would be basically part of your, you know, onset and your...
Well, I'd like to make it clear that it's as, also as a matter of record, also as a matter of record, that there was testimony here from the lady that ran the Dragonfly Cafe for many years, and it was a wonderful business for her. And the testimony there was that there was a lot of deferred maintenance and not responsibility taken by the property owner. Despite that, she managed to run a cafe out of that space.
How is that relevant to the demolition of these buildings?
Well, because you just mentioned right now how these properties are just so far gone that that, they're not repairable and possibly not usable.
I also, I also know the owner of that business.
I'm sorry?
I also know the owner of that business, and I'm aware that she rented the property in that condition.
Well, her testimony had to do with deferred maintenance, sir, and that's what I'm referring to, all right? And it was usable to the extent that she was able to run a cafe from there. And at that time, her biggest concern was that eventually some sort of maintenance would kick in, and that's what I'm discussing right now.
I don't believe it's the, it's the priority of this commission to be in tenant landlord relations, and I think that's a lot of assumption on your part.
Excuse me, Doug. We, we asked you to, to come up here and discuss the building, and you start off by telling us that you don't feel the commission's responsibility is what I had stated. And I'll read you from part of the historic overlay zone, section sixteen point, sixteen point two, two, zero point one, intent and purpose. "The town intends to protect, preserve, perpetuate areas in historical, cultural, architectural, artistic, geographic significance located within the town." And then it goes on to talk about the historic.
Thank you, thank you for that. I wasn't...
And it's the historic overlay zone continuing of that, of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. I wasn't... I would go on to say that, you know, I think it's, it's difficult to find new uses for old buildings. It's really difficult. And I think there comes a time when we just have to accept change and, and move on. I don't think the, I don't think the owners have necessarily shown you a viable option for what would go in place of those buildings. And I think if there was a viable option, that would be a good argument for, for, for their demolition. So in, in the meantime, delinquent buildings are a nuisance and a hazard, and I think those buildings are close to becoming a nuisance and a hazard. Upon my walk-through of them this week, windows were broken, they had obviously been entered. And in the last couple of years, you know, we witnessed a murder and a death in, in a dilapidated building that didn't have a use. So I think we all find ourselves in a tough situation with...
Wait a minute, not in these buildings.
Not in, yes, there, yes, there's been...
The murder was in these buildings?
No, in another vacant building, which was the convent south of town.
Well, we're not discussing, look...
The town was gone after, can I finish my...
Yeah, go ahead, finish, but, but stay on the subject.
Okay, dilapidated buildings are a nuisance and a hazard.
Okay.
And we have in our presence two dilapidated buildings on this property that are beyond repair and beyond use.
On that, on that note?
Well, David, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Are you done with your, with your speech, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just ask the applicant's architect, and I've, I've heard this now from the owner, the applicant, and the architect, that it's not feasible to renovate 402 and 404. The building's on the west side of Paseo del Pueblo Norte, and yet, I had a wonderful meal at 401 the other night, the building across the street, which was wonderfully renovated. And it appears to me that that building is about the same size, about the same era, and it's a wonderful addition to the commerce and the nightlife and the food and beverage options in our historic zone. I look across the street at Taos Aisle House, wonderful project, thank you, what a, what a great property. What's to prevent that from happening to, to 401 or 404? What's different?
Well, thank you for saying that. Let me try to explain that to you. It was about a, two years ago that the gentleman came to me that wanted to brew beer and sell beer at 401 Paseo, well, North Pueblo Road, let's use the old terminology. And he rented it, and he, he brewed beer, he sold beer, he had a, a beer and wine li, he didn't have a beer and wine license, he had a brewer's license, and he had a very tough time, and I think Mr. Yarovitz can swear to that, that he was rapidly growing broke. If it hadn't been for a insurgence of money from a gentleman in Kansas City, Missouri, to come in and dump about $200,000 into that place, that place would be ready for demolition today. And that was just a stroke of luck on everybody's part for this gentleman to come in and say, "Look, if we take your brewery, if you brew beer, but if we also add a kitchen in there so that we can serve food, and we do this and do this," which the gentleman that was running the place had nowhere with what to do, he didn't have the money, just like I don't have the money to do anything with these two buildings, that place would be empty today. And that was like one in a hundred. I swear to God, that's, that, that saved, that saved 401.
Mr. Tarleton, it's a...
Now, is that gonna happen again?
I would hope so.
I, I would hope so. It hasn't happened in six months. I, I don't know what to tell you. I just don't have the money to put a dime in either of those buildings.
I guess my response, though, and then all three parties here, the owner, the applicant, and the agent, have brought this up, is simply not feasible. And I look across the street, and boy, that looks like a real feasible renovation. It turned out great. I've been in the building.
And we did all the work, yes, great, yes.
I think if you talk to anybody about that project, they'll, they'll give you very raving reviews of the architecture, the ownership of the building, the maintenance of the building, the food.
But David?
What a great thing.
David?
Yes, sir.
We still have a motion on the floor, and I'd like to kind of direct these to if we're gonna continue with this motion, or withdraw it, or what. And I think we've heard arguments.
I didn't get a chance to respond to your, to the question on the table, if I may.
Please.
The difference between the, the property where the Aisle House is in, and the...
No, I, I thought you were going to speak about the motion on the table, Mr. Patterson, which is to delay the, delay action by this commission until we've received the report from the state Historic Preservation Office, giving us more advice, more information, more research on the properties known as 402 and 404 Pueblo del Norte.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, I was asked a question, and I didn't get a chance to respond.
I would like to hear the response to the question of what makes the property across the street different?
I, I do not understand how that affects the motion on the table that was moved and seconded. And we've had discussion, but very little on that motion. And I'd like to bring the commission and the audience back to that motion, which is basically, "Thank you for the information tonight, but until we receive a report from the state on the value of these properties as it relates to their demolition, we can return to the conversation at that time."
Yes. The motion has been made, and it was seconded.
I'm sorry, sir, but I didn't get a chance to respond to the question. May I respond to the question?
Wait a minute, which question are you talking about now?
Mr. Commissioner Henry asked me a question of what made the building across the street viable, and the two buildings on the east side of the street not viable.
Well, I don't think, I also asked Mr. Commissioner Henry to, to keep it about this building. I could also continue this argument with all kinds of other, I would like to, if you have comments on that, maybe you can bring them up next time if indeed we table them, because that's what we're asking it right now at this time. What does that have to do with us tabling it? So I'd like to keep that straight, if I may. I also, well, Doug...
With all due respect, I think it does have to do with the tabling of the issue.
The staff has, the town of Taos has asked for a report from the state Historic Preservation Office.
That's correct.
On the mo, on the permit before us to demolish 402 and 404. Before I, as a commissioner, listen further and begin to make a decision on the appropriateness of a non-contributing property to be demolished in the historic overlay zone, I wish to hear what the state has to say.
And Commissioner Figueroa?
Whether that has to do with 401 and its wonderful rebirth, or whether it's more about the grandparents of the owner who built that house at 404, in which Dr. Kilgore provided more free medical services in Taos than any doctor in the history of Taos, probably up there with Doc Martin, if not above him. So that's, you know, I'm, it's now an hour and a half since this meeting was called to order, and the motion on the table is to table this request until we have more information from the state.
And Mr. Figueroa, or Commissioner Figueroa, the only thing I would have to add to that...
So I'd like to call for the vote, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing I would have to add to that is that in the past, with all the recommendations that we asked for, for SHPO over the years, SHPO has responded that we have our own Historic Preservation Commission. And the Historic Preservation Commission that we have basically has jurisdiction over Taos. So the response that, that we'll most likely find out of SHPO, and the response that we've had over the years from SHPO, is that, that they don't necessarily weigh in on this matter, and this matter is for your decision. And I think it's irresponsible to delay that decision, waiting for a response that will most likely not come, or if it does come, will reflect that decision back to this commission.
Well, Mr. Patterson, I respectfully disagree, and I call again for the question, Mr. Chairman, on the motion.
Thank you, I'll stand down.
Thank you. Take a roll call on the motion, please.
Okay, I just want to clarify one thing. Are you tabling or continuing, or is that all?
What's, what's the technicality to, to tabling versus continuing it?
I think continuing would move it to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Tabling it, I believe, is not moving it forward. That's what I believe, but I'm not sure.
We made a motion, there's a second. For whatever reasons, the next thing was to vote. And we did interrupt that with more discussion. My gentle suggestion is that we complete that process and then move on with our meeting.
Take a roll call, please, on the motion.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes, I, I voted in favor of that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Christmas?
Yes.
Chairman Palacios?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Choma?
Yes.
Five yeses.
I want to add a footnote to this, and out of respect for you, Doug, Mr. Patterson, this is not a new project before us. This project has come before us before, and it was agreed that they would take care of those buildings. And they have not done that, even to their acknowledgement. So we're asking to move it. Our hearing on that is to preserve, preserve those buildings, and now it's being brought before us again, and there doesn't seem to be enough information, and you're welcome to, to supply that the next time it comes forward, and possibly tabling it means, as a technicality, that we don't even hear it till meeting or through down the line. But in the meantime, I'd recommend that there be some acknowledgement to our, what we granted prior on our request, and that was, they could keep these buildings, they should take care of them, and they haven't done that.
Could you clarify, is there no date specific for moving this forward?
In terms of a technicality, Mark, we don't have a lawyer present. Our intent is that there's not enough information to continue with it today, therefore, our, our position on this is the same as it was, and if we're to argue that now there's a renewed intent to demolish these buildings, that both parties need more information. Part of it is information from the state. What is so hard about that? Wait a minute, Mark, what's so hard about that?
I just want clarification on whether they have to reapply for a new hearing, or whether it's a continuation.
We'll leave that up to you, if you want to reapply. I think, I think it's fine to bring it up next month, that's my opinion.
Then it's a deny. Tabling is either a deny or a continue.
Diana, can you repeat the motion?
Hello?
You have a continuation to the next meeting, or you have a denial. You can't do tabling with no decision.
Well, that's what she, that's what she brought up.
Repeat what we just voted on.
Well, then that puts you in the wrong place.
I didn't, I don't have what the motion was. Paul, can you repeat what your motion was? And I have another question, because both cases were two, or both addresses were two separate cases, I believe that we have to vote separately on them.
Okay.
We can, Paul, if you wish to repeat your motion for the second building?
So my motion was to delay action on this request for demolition. I guess that means carrying it over to the next scheduled meeting, when hopefully we have the report from the state Historic Preservation Office as to the appropriateness to demolish non-contributing structures 402 and 404. I did put them together, so I'll revise that motion if you'd like them to be separate, first for 402 and then for 404.
I second the motion.
We're having logistics problems here.
Okay.
If I may, just, I know it's completely out of order. I think you have three options in front of you, and it's to approve, deny, or continue. Those are the three options.
What?
So the motion you've made is a valid motion. You have three options, approve, deny, or continue. Those are your three options.
I'm sorry?
He said continue.
I said continue.
He said continue.
So I think we had the vote on 402.
Yes.
So the motion now is for 404, known as the Dr. Kilgore residence.
I seconded the motion.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Christmas?
Yes.
Chairman Palacios?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Choma?
Yes.
Five yeses. April 8th is the date of the next regularly scheduled meeting.
All right. I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight to present that information on 402 and 404. I appreciate it.
No.
No, we'll go there for a beer.
Matters from staff?
We have nothing else.
What's that?
Staff doesn't have anything else as far as matters from staff?
Matters from the Historic Preservation Commission?
Matters from the Historic Preservation Commission. There's an item under that. There's a discussion of the... Via this... Entertaining a discussion of the calendar dates. We have a conflict with some of the scheduling. Bill, would you like to?
Yes, I suggested this. I... My first question was whether or not...
Excuse me. Excuse me. Hey, can you guys take that outside, please?
Sorry.
My first question was, and I'll ask this to Dinah, it can... Since we've already voted on the meetings for the rest of the year, can a new motion be brought up to change them?
I asked Rick that question, and he said he did not think that we could change it because it was already voted on. So... And it was after I put it on the...
It was, okay. Well, then I'd like to withdraw my suggestion.
Move for adjournment.
Here a second?
Second.
Hold the favor. Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, guys.